I call a meeting order. I call the October 16th, 2019 Frankl Township Board of Supervisors Meeting Order at 7:01. The attendance are Supervisors Day, Morris, Schneider, Torres. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Harbin Historical Commission Chairman Paul Legassi, Township Manager Joan McLaw, and Secretary Chairman Norris. And there are two members of the public here.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Brent here, we have Mr. D.C., we have Chairman here.
Now we have four.
Four. Okay, we get four members. Okay, public comment, a couple of comments for anything related to tonight's agenda, or last public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. It's important to state your names clearly for the take, so comments can be reflected accurately. Please state whether you're a township resident or a township taxpayer. Since we have such a small group tonight, we'll take the comments and the issue while we discuss the issue. We'll typically discuss the issue first, and then we'll take the public comments and the issues. Nancy, you want to start the first one?
I make a motion to approve the September 18th, 2019 version three meeting minutes presented by the Township Secretary.
I second that.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries by sir.
So I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 21916 regarding disposition of records for the Board of Supervisor meeting of September 18th, 2019, and the Planning Commission meeting of September 5th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Thanks, David.
David.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Okay, so it's, motion carries by sir.
Okay, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve the September Treasuries Report, which includes the following dispersments: The General Fund with dispersments and transfers of $86,909.86; Park and Recreation Fund with dispersments of $9,247.57; The Open Space Fund with dispersments of $6,553.17; Traffic Impact East with dispersments of $38,199.01; Capital Reserve Fund with dispersments of $25,829.24; Emergency Services Fund with dispersments of $39,496.89; and Fire Hardened Fund with dispersments of $580.80, leaving a balance in all funds of $844,287.46. Second by Stephen. Do you have comments on the Treasury?
Yeah, just a quick question. On the Traffic Impact East Fund, what is that, $38,000 dispersment, is that correct?
We spent that on the PCL Road.
PCL.
PCL.
Yeah. That'd be the road program, and then first Emergency Services for Panar, Fireville.
That's what I, so that's.
Or the way it's the West Road.
Fireville. And then the Capital Reserve Fund, that's also for roadwork.
Yes.
There are a couple questions. Nancy, if you're down on that one?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Parking Rec Fund, the $57,828, and the current spending, $7,703, leads me to think that the current amount has not been adjusted for the change in mileage from, what was it, beginning of last year to the idea that we're taking certain modes and putting it in the general fund. Is that, will that be, is that correct, and will that be true though at the end of the year?
Um, it was, it is adjusted. It's, the money going in there is being adjusted. You know, Stephen, what I may have done, I may have liked to do all of it coming out, and not changed it. I'd have to check on that. But I mean, the money is, I know the correct amount is going into the fund.
Okay.
And we have promised that we need money for.
Right, that's important to get it.
Yeah, but that budget, that budget amount may be the amount that would, if we had taken it all out, and then adjusted it would be.
That's what I thought, that's what I wanted to bring to the Treasury.
Yeah, I need to check that.
You afraid it's too low, is that what you're thinking, Stephen?
Well, he said I budgeted $57,000, and I took in $70,000. Why is it, why the big difference?
And I think the budget amount reflected the change that we did earlier, where we took, we.
Put it back in January.
Exactly.
To help pay for the easement.
Correct.
Sure.
Second question, yeah, if you can check that. Oh, when we did the Open Space Fund, that was many, many years ago. And I know we got a good rate at the time, something in the neighborhood of 2% with.
It's 2.78% or something like that.
Exactly.
It's under 2.8%.
And I was reading in the local paper, Kennedy's done refinancing. Back when we got it done, the interest rates were quite a bit higher than they are now, and I was just wondering if it would make sense, and we also didn't know what the amortization schedule was at the time, since the annual payments are increasing. I just wondered if it makes sense to go back to the same place, apples to apples, and check if what the current rate would be, if we can get maybe slightly better terms or something.
Okay. That's DeWalt. DeWalt.
DeWalt, okay. There's one thing that's unusual about that loan, is that the interest rates are paid monthly, but you only pay the principal once a year. That's typically knocked away.
Oh, as opposed to a little bit each month? As opposed to, if you're paying, some parts go to the principal, some parts go to the interest.
Yeah, but this time you're paying the interest on the whole principal, all your loan. You only reduce the principal once a year.
Yes, we said it's different from what you would normally do.
No, it's not a normal mortgage, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know what that was.
Well, the 2.78% could be an attractive advertised rate, go through the entire loan and do what you're saying, as well as how it increases over time, the yield of maturity or the actual rate could be something higher.
It's pretty, it's worth looking at anyway, see whether there are any better terms out there.
Yeah, that's, I was asking about that. And the Reserve Fund, so we have $138,000, I thought we had more than that. I guess we only have $138,000?
Um, well, whatever it says, we're close to two. Right, and we're budgeting, we had budgeted, put in $5,000 going this year.
So we got up to one.
So we're still at two.
Yeah.
So we still have, I guess, can't talk about, not doing anything there. And lastly, the Parks and Rec Fund has a $1,450 annual telephone bill. What is that for?
It's for the internet, for the security cameras and.
Oh, okay. I know it's actually telephone, people actually, there's actually.
There is, well, there's a telephone there because it's part of the package, but I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, that's what I mean.
Yeah, okay, just want to make sure that's going to be correct.
So we spend $13,000 a year for the cameras, is that?
$1,400.
Oh, oh, it's a year, a dozen months.
No, 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 no.
Good, fine.
Yeah, that's it. So it's just a double check in the park and see if we can do anything on the debt terms.
I can regate to, you can count these, you can count them out and see if there's anything else out there.
It's still a pretty decent rate, though, under 3%.
Hey, it's a couple thousand a year.
Yes, I'm just trying to understand the terms to what, just.
Well, the terms are not, that structure is unusual.
Right, and that's why I wonder, when you actually pay all of it, if it's something like $2,000, $2,000 a day. And I can figure that out.
But it runs another 20 years, so it's not.
Yes, so that's a good reason.
Definitely worth looking at. It sounds low, but.
Let's see, there was one issue while we were talking about the park today. Last week, Jeff and I went down, looked at the bathrooms, and we did walk around the park in general, looked at things. Looked at the healing gardens down there, and what we noticed is that all the buried timbers that, or the perimeter of that, they look pretty bad. We might want to consider replacing those timbers. So what I'll look at, I don't know what the price is, but we may want to, if we're going to replace those, we ought to do that before we plant anything in there.
Are they six by six?
No, no, they're, I don't know. These are really rough looking.
I think they're four by fours.
Getting ready to put all their nice looking plants in there right now, and timbers are really rough looking.
We might want to think about using maybe bricks or pavers for, for the edges instead of the wood, because that'll last forever.
I know, and it won't last.
It'll be worth, it'll be worth looking at, because the stuff's real ratty looking right now.
Yeah, it is.
I think it's a really good idea to think about.
Just an observation.
Something more permanent.
Okay.
But if you guys have a chance, go through the bathrooms and across the park, they're beautiful. Just beautiful.
Okay, so you're up next.
We had the motion, we had a second one.
Oh, sorry.
I think we voted.
We didn't vote on this. Wait, I'm sorry, the finance?
Yes.
I know, we just said vote now.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries by sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
That happens a lot. Okay, next is the August zoning officers' report. No motions required. Permits issued were 10, building inspections 19, building fees collected was $1,435.22, nothing for occasion, open space or impact fees, but miscellaneous collected was $1,400, and one ongoing zoning issue reported. Joan, anything else to know about that?
Um, let me see, what's, what's the article?
That was the 33/27.
Oh, the 33/27, okay. Well, in my Friday update, I told you that we want our court case regarding that. Mark, and Mark, did you send your letter out?
We did, today.
To the district court judge?
We had three cases that were pending previously before the district judge here in, or in Camden. And those were appealed, and we won that appeal before the Court of Common Pleas. We have six more that are on hold from April, so we're going to go back to the district court judge and ask him to make a decision, the storm, the common pleas decision, so.
Good, presence.
Yes.
Okay, now, has the property owner been notified of that decision now?
Presumably, it's an order of court that goes out to the defendant as well as the plaintiff, so.
Thank you.
So now the next step is another level of courts that.
Well, that's, the judge here.
This is the magistrate court.
Right, the district judge, the district magistrate was reluctant to make a decision on the pending appeals before him until the judge of the Court of Common Pleas made a decision, so that's what we're waiting for. So we've just written him a letter today and asked him to, you know, informing him of the order and asking him to make a decision, so.
Okay, all right, we'll see what the next step is.
The, the village, I mean, I know we're slow, it's slow, but it's.
Slow as this.
I don't, so, so I don't.
Well, it's a step. I can watch the main drive several hours.
We're nothing here.
I'm glad to hear it.
Quickly in government.
It just doesn't, yeah.
No matter how hard you push it, it just doesn't.
I'm glad to hear it. All right.
Boy, who's last, the last one, sorry.
This was the September report.
Okay.
So, so that concludes the August zoning officers' report, unless there's anybody, nothing else I have. The miscellaneous fees, $1,400. Anything in particular that you need to pay?
I think most of those, the $100 fees are zoning permits. The $150 was electrical. And like, for example, one for the, kind of, factor, having a hundred zoning, a hundred, there's plumbing in there, and there's some electrical in there. So a lot less of that in there.
So it is spread out, yes.
Yeah, that's what was on.
Stephen Barlett paid for me, and yet it's also spread out. Okay. So that concludes the zoning officer's report.
Just, just in the comment, all these fees we collect here really cover all the costs. We don't make, it doesn't make anyone on this, though. It just covers the cost of our inspectors and the administration departments. Okay, all right. The Kathleen Drive, it says everything's okay, the vehicles are removed. What's the status of that person operating a business without his, um, approval? Is that?
Without a, a home owner.
Right. This property's not in point, but is he still operating the business?
Well, it, no, it's violation set. I'll follow again tomorrow. I'll check with him and see what the terms of the violation letter.
Okay.
The requirements are, other than cleaning up, I mean, could be living so much time if we had a permit or something.
So to have a second business?
To have any business.
Right, right.
At least the vehicles are very good, so that's.
Yes.
Yeah, that was pretty good.
That's a nasty boss, though, that's it.
So next is PC.
Okay, Brent, can you give us a PC report, Mary?
Sure. The PC only had one item of discussion, which was the green energy alternative ordinance that we started the month before. We started it just by working on, on the first topic that we came up to, which was, with multi-solar panels. Like the Planning Commission does, we discussed a lot of things very thoroughly, and we'll look at individual words and discuss whether or not that word needs to be replaced with a different word to make sure that our means seem to be as precise as possible. So it's going to take us a while to get through, but we did highlight a couple of issues that we wanted to take a look at, some of the larger areas, and no decisions were really quite made, but stormwater is, is something that could be an issue with, with very large areas that was brought up. So we're going to continue the discussion next one.
Yeah, one of the issues discussed was the stormwater, and we're, the board was proposing that we use the DEP's recommendation for how to manage stormwater on those, but the PC is looking at it, and they're wondering whether it's all that effective.
Well, when you consider a small area of panels, something like 1,000 square feet over a couple of acres, there's a lot of opportunity for the water to infiltrate before it leaves the property, but if you put 50 acres of panels up, and depending on how you treat that water as it comes off of those panels, if you don't put any EMP practices in place to take care of that water, you're creating a dangerous situation for people downstream of you. So the DEP's suggestions looked like it was maybe made more for a smaller area on a larger parcel than a very large area of arrays. So that's where we think we're going to need to have some kind of a stormwater analysis done, just to make sure that we're not, we're not doing anything downstream of the property that's, that's installed.
I have a suggestion for you, is Penn State is, there was an article in the Inquirer about two months ago, about Penn State, huge solar project, top of the line, you know, following everything to a T. You could probably use theirs, they've done way more research than we can do, and get a sense of where they've gone with it. Pretty good best case test.
My concern is taking on the liability of doing something ourselves. I don't doubt what you can come up with technically, but.
I almost.
I'm inclined, I'm inclined to follow the DEP, and if they're wrong, then we're not wrong.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't think we'd ever be able to run all of the money to do that.
Yeah.
But you might be a man who'll figure out what's too big, and I think.
Well, rather than us figuring out what we need to do, I was leaning towards just the, you know, if someone was proposing this, like any other land development, they would have to do a stormwater analysis. So they would have to have an engineer do a stormwater analysis and show whether or not they're causing the problem or not, and then the township engineer can review that and see if it's within standards of, of stormwater. And stormwater plans have been around for a long time, and engineers pretty much kind of know how to treat those. So I think we can figure out what's, what's happening. It's just that the DEP was saying, you don't have to do the stormwater if you do A, B, C, D, and E. And I, I think that, that maybe applies well for a small array, but might not with a larger array. If you're going to put a larger array in, then I think that you should go ahead and make sure that a stormwater study is done, and, and, you know, an engineer signs and seals it, and that our engineer reviews it.
Well, what townships are you following? Yeah, you following the township, the services, just you?
Stormwater regulations have been around for a long time.
Sorry, not the stormwater, the actual green energy ordinance. Are other townships following that ordinance?
We haven't really gotten into, you know, what, what we're going to do with that, and any adjectives. That's going to take a while.
Yeah, it's always good to follow that practice.
But I was just specifically talking about the stormwater issue, which, which is what we, we found is, is an issue.
Why? But if they're not, if other townships aren't taking that approach, you'd be more likely to ask them why, you know, and to try to look at it from a, okay, what are other townships doing? Because when people come in to look at opportunities, if we become the township of no, unless there's a really good reason, it's not helpful, you know. Why would you ask them to do stormwater if no one else asks that? And if the DEP doesn't ask it, and if all these, you know, top rate ordinances happen. So it's just good to kind of look and see what other people are doing before we go to a lot of trouble.
I, I think that issue will come to the board when the PC starts it, and it's going to be a decision whether you follow a technical approach, which I don't disagree with, I say it, I've got an engineering background, but, or, or do you follow a political approach and follow the DEP? So that's going to be a decision that's going to come to the board.
And hopefully the DEP based it on engineering.
Doesn't look like it, but we'll see.
Yeah, we can just do the discussion and make sure. And thank you for taking that on the line also.
Okay, the PC's doing a really good job of that, very thorough analysis.
We, we take our time and try to make sure that exactly what we want to convey is.
But it's not impressing us, so you can take your time, so we're happy with that. Okay, let's see. Let's see. Chairman Paul Legassi will give a summary of October, first Harbin Historical Commission meeting. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as it turned out, the conditions of membership being such as they are, we in fact only have a court for our meeting in October, so we're going to be historical commission, often meet once before the end of the year. We had three main topics before us. One was, we were talking about 896 roadwork in advance of the meeting the following week with Pendott, and we went over a number of items, a lot of which got hashed out in the field. We also talked briefly about the Churchill African Cemetery. We do have a woman who has volunteered to help with the need research on that, so I'm hoping that now that there's less to do with respect to replying to Pendott's various assessment of historic properties with respect to the 896 roadwork, since the Section 106 process is done, that there'll be more time for that. And finally, we discussed the work that we had done on the Historic Resources Map, which is finalized now, and we're going to send in our corrections to the Chester County Planning Commission and prepare a final current Historic Resources Map of our township. There are a number of demolitions that have taken place, like a small vehicle. There are a number of, there's one addition, since the Churchill African Cemetery is now in progress with a survey. And there are a couple upgrades since as a result of the Section 106 review, there's been 896, two properties that are now classed as eligible for the National Register, not previously, so classed, and so those are classified properties and upgraded, plus in transferring files and plenty of information consistent in a couple areas. That'll all be cleaned up and done. Finally, we talked about talks and training opportunities, and although this was, and at that point, we're looking for ideas for upcoming talks that we sponsored in London. And since then, we have finalized the November talk, which we're getting a little nervous about, since I have that for not following to quite as close to the talk date. But on November 14th, Professor Marshall Decker, who's actually a professor of emeritus with Westchester, is going to come and talk on the story of the land, and it will be both historical as well as incorporating information from archaeology and that sort. And that will be November 14th at 7:00 PM in London.
So these are the Indians, right?
Yeah, right. This is, this is the Indians. And then finally, just as a matter of course, I'd like to note that, just go over some information we just learned when we were out on 896. And so there were Pendott employees, there were supervisors, there were township staff, there were, three of us from Harbin Historical Commission. And what we know as a result of that meeting is that Pendott is going to add crosswalks at the stop zones, which had not been clear as of August, that Pendott is planning to add gateway access north and south of, it's not really south, it's east of the, 896, on the outskirts of the village. They are going to look into the safety and feasibility of crosswalks, possibly some distance from the village center, say, both, again, both north and south. Whether those will come about will depend upon, to great degree, on Pendott's judgment concerning their safety and accessibility. They're going to look at ways to reduce, for lack of a better term, we'll call the visibility of the asphalt at the periphery of the intersection. Now, it's an 896, because we're going to lose the grassy islands in order to make three-way stop work. The plans as of August called for basically intersection with standard markings all around, and the travellings are defined by large areas of yellow stripes at the periphery that can be used for trucks when you're making turns, which then will not be used by cars. And so we're hoping to get some of that reduced at the periphery somehow, so that the appearance is not of such, quite such a large mass. And there were talks of some sort of green, and if that's going to come down to simply some sort of green thermoplastic spray paint, I don't think that's going to be a desirable green solution. And then something involving bricks, even if it's, it must be a brick thermoplastic covering, this is going to be preferable to the large green mass. But I would hope that we might at least be able to get a sort of concrete brick pattern pressed periphery of all goes well. I think it's, it's important to point out that because Pendott is very careful not to do any work outside the existing road area, that there are no Section 106 issues associated with this, so we're pretty much dependent upon Pendott's goodwill for any and all of this going forward. Nonetheless, it was at least my personal attempt while we were there discussing it to, to push for whatever we could possibly get to improve the situation for the residents and business owners and property owners in the village, let Pendott worry about safety and feasibility and come back and tell us that that can't be done. And at that point, you know, live with what we've got to live with, but since I've spent a lot of time pushing for things that have been done.
I couldn't go, I was out of town last Tuesday, but it was encouraging to hear the pushing, got what you wanted.
It got some of it, and I think that, I will say that, first off, and I, actually I should send it to the short round. I was pleased that they came down.
You should.
Again, they're, they were under absolutely no issue to do anything. They, there is no Section 106 process. So it is, it is nice that they came down, and. And I think they were thoughtful and considered listeners in the discussion. I think that in my pushing, I tried to be polite. But like, you know, and we also had Karen Marshall perhaps on. I've been more vigorously than I agree, but she's a veteran of these battles. She does, you know, it's give and take.
Yeah.
And you know, and you know that they're not gonna do anything that they can't afford or that they don't consider safe. But I think it doesn't hurt to at least ask for things and let them decide.
Plus, they were there with you, they saw.
They were good listeners. I thought they were pretty good and listened to all the issues.
No, I thought it was a very collegial discussion.
I think we got out of that, we did reinforce the desire to get the traffic islands, the slow-down islands, and they agreed to do that. So I don't think we're gonna lose that. We couldn't do much about the center of the intersection with respect to the grass plot, but that opens up some other areas on the perimeter. And we're trying to get some extra green stuff in there.
Yeah, we'll see what they offer us.
So we got, they're gonna look into that. And they did agree that they would draw an effective crosswalk system at the stopping point. We also asked whether they could put a crosswalk at the islands. And that's maybe problematic for them. They didn't say no, but the issue really of crossing at the islands where you don't have a positive traffic stop is a potential safety issue for people crossing without setting a traffic.
It is, and I don't disagree with you on that.
And they're gonna come back to us. They didn't make a decision that they could or couldn't do it, so we left that to them.
Right.
But we'll get the crossing situation at the traffic stop.
Yeah, I mean, especially after reading posts and not really even paid attention to do it before, but reading Facebook posts and seeing that people have, the people on the one side of 896 have their no boxes on the other side of 896. So a crosswalk or two, I think, is gonna be quite helpful, which is why I would like to see one crosswalk, you know, further down in the area, the islands or perhaps in between. You know, if they can put some sort of pedestrian activated flashing lights to at least, right, to at least help alert the traffic that somebody's intending to stop. And that might be one way of improving the safety of such a place.
Crossing the roadway with traffic movements are an issue. The behavior of drivers hasn't been good. We just had, we just had an incident over on Old School House Road at that house fire. A fireman got run over by a driver that's not paying attention. Just trying to control traffic, so.
Yeah, my hope is, well, I mean, we'll see what Penda has to say. But my hope is that as we build the more common features into this, that it will increase the feasibility of perhaps, especially if we have the addition of some pedestrian operated flashing lights, of creating a safer space for crossing at a distance from the village. It would be very appropriate, for example, down, say, between the school and Doc Ling's on the far side of the Duckling entrance, the north side of the Duckling entrance. It would be, that's an area that makes sense for people to want to cross, especially if they felt that they could walk over to the doctor's offices or over to the vineyard and please some beg to something functioning in the former, you know, basics.
That's a great point, Paul. So people are going to cross. So, you know, I think our job is, as best as we can with Penda, to make it as safe as possible.
Right.
We can't just tell people not to cross.
But again, they're not, you know, you know, we can ask, but they're not gonna do anything they consider unsafe or not considered.
Beyond the, yeah.
Right. And they have no reason to give it to us, and I've noted. Anyway.
But it's great that you're on it, because the folks who, the board members who are, I appreciate that, because if they know we care, then, you know, they do wanna please people, they're not completely, and so I think they appreciate it.
No, and there was, I think they are to a great degree responsive to thoughtful requests. As when I wrote my letter to them, I acknowledged, although I did have my say at the end, but I acknowledged that they weren't going to do any damage to the structures that they, you know, they had, they'd done everything right. But that doesn't mean that the liquidating tube is not going to have an impact on the livability and economic viability of living.
Jim German, you wanna give the FSA report?
Sure. Not a lot of activity since last month. Our membership's still full, thirty-five. And there is a waiting list of township residents and other non-residents that wanna get into the association as openings take place. And then, you know, the last month, we had our annual proficiency shoot. As of this time, the twenty-three members successfully passed the archery and twenty-one members have passed the shotgun proficiency test. From last month, we have got a couple of members, you know, completed archery proficiency with one of the board members on the association and witnessed it. So we're getting through them, the ones that, like I said, the numbers don't add up to thirty-five because some people just like the archery, some people just like to shoot a shotgun. So I don't think we'll ever see thirty-five to thirty-five areas. People just don't wanna do it. As I noted again, last month, hunting season is well underway. A lot of fields are cut now, the deer are moving. Almost nailed one Saturday down Appleton. You know, I was going down past the strip of the bill and another car was coming around the corner. It's like, oh, here comes one. And we stopped maybe from here to the ballpark and let the deer ride off eventually this. And it's like, that's too close, but it was bigger than ours. Parcels involved in marked safety zones, warning hazards, maps, notifications at the parking areas and the goalboards, and all the parcels that's been taken care of. So far, we've, the association's harvested two deer, one buck named Bambi and one doe in white Collie.
That was how yours?
I knew somebody would find me. I knew somebody, I knew she'd sell it.
I saw your tits.
The big thing from a community service standpoint, we talked about at the beginning of the month, the association was able to get in, to get the five girls installed. I wasn't able to do it or participate in any of that, but I updated the service project list from Bob. And I saw a lot of our members were involved a lot of time. It's essentially eighty-one hours to, between the planning run, getting that extra supply here or there and then getting it all in.
I can testify that that field is full of rock.
There was a lot of digging involved.
It was dry and very hard to dig through. It took a lot more work than any of us expected to do the whole stuff.
There's a big area under the grill that was done with pavers.
Yes, beautiful.
It'd be dug in, so it looks, it looks really nice, really nice job. So next year, people have an opportunity to go out there and do some grilling. And very nice project.
When I got home this afternoon, there was a late email from Bob from the Service Project lead, that he put a request out. The Girl Scout picnic table that's down there somewhere needs the tabletop refinished, so.
He put that request out to the guys. Hopefully, before the weather changes, we'll get that sanded down and refinished and hopefully protected throughout the winter. And that's it for this one. Parking's good, Jeff. I took a walk around there the other day for about an hour. It was nice. Looking good down there.
I think the big thing here for me is, you know, as of this date, a hundred and thirty-nine hours of service, if memory serves me correct, we had a hundred and thirty-three all last year.
Yep.
So we've got a few there.
Well, that service, you know, saves the township significantly. I know they're heavily engaged with our own contractor. So we appreciate the FSA doing that. Contractor's not that interested in doing this stuff. He likes to do the roadwork, so fits that, fits real well. So thank you. Down to business.
Yes, finally, it's you!
All right, so we have the first item of business is Mr. Benson McConaughey. And there's two other people in here this evening.
They were not able to make an appointment, but...
Okay. Give a presentation on tiny houses. I have seen a good bit of this activity on the home improvement net channel. We've got a lot of, before we get into this thing, one thing I wanna talk a little bit about is, at some point, how are we gonna manage the waste disposal, water supply, stormwater, and driveway issues in terms of service? At some point, we wanna talk about that. Okay.
Cool. Yeah, you got a question before we get, before we get started. So first of all, thank you very much for letting me speak to this.
How long is this slideshow?
Uh, just about two hours.
I was gonna say, we'll get something about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I've noticed that you run a page shift, so I'll try to talk quickly. So I wanna just briefly touch on a couple of points. So first off, I'm not coming here presenting a specific business plan or develop an idea. This is not really a pitch deck. It's more what I call a concept deck. So for the last couple of years, Meredith and myself, as well as Chris, have been exploring different tiny house villages across the US as well as some other countries, just to see what different people are doing with tiny homes. Obviously, it's kind of a cool concept to talk about. And there have been a lot of different kind of implementations or business models for what can be done with tiny homes. But right off the bat, just wanna quickly point out that tiny home is very different than a mobile home. And we see some reasons here. The main difference being, as far as the home itself, the materials are not custom the same way they are in a mobile home. So if tiny home is built with all the same materials than you would build a traditional house, and as a result, it's a lot easier to, maybe I shouldn't say a lot easier, but it's oftentimes easier to maintain and it's a lot more durable. So you look at a tiny house twenty years after being built, and it still looks put together, obviously made with kind of a lot of love and care. Many times because it's not, the people that, I'm kinda jumping ahead, but just to briefly tuck on it, the people that usually live in tiny houses or vacation in tiny houses are doing it by choice. And they're doing it out of a conscious decision to do so. It's something they can do. And so it attracts a little bit of a different clientele than a typical mobile home. The other big thing, and these are mostly about the houses itself, but the management of a tiny house village is typically kept within one centralized department. So you're not saying, okay, guys, anyone who wants to bring a tiny house, come on in. And you don't know if they've built it in their garage and don't know anything about craftsmanship. Rather, you're creating a village where the homes are owned by you, they're made by local craftsmen who know what they're doing, certified with whatever certifications they need. Sometimes that's an R D certification, sometimes it's a different certification. But there's a, there's a trust that's there because you're not distributing management among many parties. It's all housed and one person who's responsible to maintain it and people who supervise. So jumping ahead, this is one picture. You've probably seen a lot of different pictures, potentially tiny homes. But this is one that is kind of the entry-level model from Liberation Tiny Homes. Liberation is based in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, so not too far away. This one, I believe, starts at roughly forty-five thousand dollars. This is where most people say, wow! If they haven't really seen it before or a TV show. You can see the steps kind of going up. There are also the shelves. A normal size washer, dryer combination unit there in the back. There's all, you know, kitchen sink that's a wood burning stove. Actually, it might be called, I know they do both, but I can never remember which one's in the pictures. But that provides some heat. And you can see the loft up above where you can put a mattress. So that's a basic sleeping loft. Larger units will sometimes have two lofts on either side, but the handle's just kind of their entry-level starter model. So we can kind of skip through some of these. That's the outside. So I've actually been to Liberation a few times. And they are one of, I don't wanna go too detailed, but they're one of the most renowned builders across the US. And they'll ship homes to North America, you know, they shipped homes to Mexico, to the US. So it's kind of cool that one of the better ones is, is based in Pennsylvania. Obviously, there's been a lot of increase in people being interested in tiny homes as a concept. Like you said, there's been a lot of TV shows coming out since two thousand and four, a lot more. This metric is based on people Googling it. I guess there's obviously a whole discussion about that. Like I said, most people that have lived in tiny houses, villages, and let me just say, if anyone has questions, feel free to ask them. I don't wanna, just, I'm trying to get through, but also if you can pause if there are specific questions or concerns. Typically, the people that live in tiny houses are, as I said, a sophisticated crowd. On average, they're actually more likely to have a master's degree by a factor of two. They usually have less credit card debt, more savings, and more kind of an annual income than the average American. So not to, not to make huge comparisons, but the point is, people are doing this not out of necessity, but because they want to do it. It's a lifestyle choice. Sometimes that means they're doing it to be more friendly to the environment because it requires fewer opportunities. Sometimes they just wanna very, you know, force themselves to live a very minimalistic life, kind of a Zen, simple life. Some people do it for economic reasons, because it's more affordable. And other people just really like preserving open spaces. And if you have, you know, a two-acre or a one-acre lot or whatever lot you have, you maintain a lot more outdoorsy space than you have a small house as opposed to a big mansion on the same size of property. So a few different business models. So we kind of see across the spectrum, people doing a lot of different things with tiny houses. And like I said, there's one, well, you know, for example, that we'll get to later, there's one actually based in Elizabeth Town in Pennsylvania, which started about eighteen months ago. They're actually now the largest in the US. It's kind of called it, just an hour and a half away here in VA, most successful, also the most profitable tiny house village in North Florida. A few different models. So some people, starting on the, on the right, some people do it to address poverty and homelessness. They establish nonprofits, they do social, many times volunteer-led efforts. There are a few really good case studies, especially a woman in Detroit who has made homes for fifteen thousand dollars for veterans and others to live in, in need, low-cost housing. Kind of going to more kind of the business side, some people do it for Airbnb short-term rentals. And that's the one that I'm most interested in doing, especially in the immediate term. That's where you basically have a tiny house village and you say, if you want to stay here for two days, stay here for the weekend, you know, come in and experience a tiny house, which is actually very popular. That's generally the most profitable way to do it. People spending their fifteenth anniversary today and things like that. Sometimes you'll see villagers say, you can bring your own tiny house. I don't like that because again, you're kind of giving up control and, oh, that will look like in the future, so. And then there's a traditional lease. So you might say, all right, you can stay here for six months, you can stay here for a year, temporary house. Before we jump in, any questions?
Well, we've got questions, but why don't we just keep going?
These are a few different ones that are out in the west, Nevada, Oregon, elsewhere. This is kind of one of the earliest ones. This was back in nineteen ninety-one, I believe, that this started. You can see that they've done a good job. This is why I always like to talk about them, maintaining the grounds. And it's not just, you know, home, 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 all, you know, stacked together like... all, you know, stacked together like cans, but it really is a whole place. It's a beautiful place to, to spend some time. Shifting gears back to kind of the social side. Sorry to be jumping around, but we're just going through quickly. So, this is Faith Fowler. This is a woman in Detroit. And she has been featured on a few different TV shows. She has a TED Talk. She had a goal that she wanted to create a house that someone could live in sustainably for under ten thousand dollars a year. As in them making a salary of ten thousand dollars a year and still have their own place to go at home. She has met that goal and in some cases exceeded it. Again, with volunteer librarians, volunteer materials. So, a little bit slow to get going as a result of that. But she's been a major influencer because she has written down everything that she has learned, all of her findings, all of the various decisions, the opposition that she has faced, into a book, which has helped many other people kind of get a grasp of, is this something that should be in our community, is this not? Do we want this? Do we not? Here we can see, so she rounded out for the square footage in a house, she wanted it to be a dollar per square foot delivered per month. So, here we have a three hundred fifty square foot house, and you can rent it out for three hundred fifty bucks. They allow, this guy, I think it's back by the speed, he's named Keith. So, anyway, lots of, lots of kind of social things going on. A little bit near to home. So, I've talked to this woman a few times. Her story is very inspiring. This is Stephanie Senna. She is a professor at Villanova. And she started a homeless shelter a few years ago that was entirely run by students that made her somewhat unique in the field. She took many of her students to go see Harvard's model for addressing homelessness. Sent about a week there, and she said, "Do you want to replicate this here to home?" They loved it. She brought it back. And it's now continued entirely student run. Student time, people coming from Vexel, from Villanova, many other schools. So, it's kind of become a very successful operation. That's what she's been doing. Now, what she is doing today is she's trying to bring tiny homes to Philadelphia. Again, kind of addressing homelessness. This is not a picture of what she's doing. That's kind of confusing. But the point of this slide is to show that, kind of looking down the scale of economics, you're seeing some of the luxury side that are used in the business sense. And these are some of the ones that are more, especially out of the west, these are addressing homelessness. Okay, now this is my, my favorite slide. This is, again, the tiny house village that is in Elizabeth Town. You could go on Airbnb and rent it out this weekend if you so desire. Started by Abby Hobson. I've talked to her. She's also kind of become a very influencer in the community and in the industry of tiny homes. So, she started with just four homes a few years ago. You can see her village here. It's very nice. And she's up to, I believe, now thirty-five homes. She has a seventeen acre property. And so, she's able to space them out and kind of build slowly as demand grows. There's a nice pond which she cleaned up. It was pretty dirty before, but starting to look good now. You'll notice that these are on wheels. So, one of the things that makes them street legal, and from a zoning perspective, is that they are not on concrete slabs. Sometimes you'll find that they'll put dedicated structures elsewhere in order to meet some of them. Up here is an example where it's better to put them on grass or gravel foundations. As far as cookups go, they follow industry standards of those for water, electric, and sewer. So, you'll, you will have a gas tank. You can see one there. But everything else is pretty much plugged into your existing, you know, septic or sewer. City Water, Little Water. I think she has a well or maybe two wells. But just kind of your, your normal...
So, thanks for the question. So, here in our township, it's one septic per home. So, how does that work?
That's something that would have to be figured out.
Okay.
You're looking at typically one person staying there. Sometimes two people stay in there for, on average, two nights a week.
If you take that model, right, if you do the...
Exactly.
Depends on the model that you're going to follow, right?
Right. Yeah, and I'm a little bit, this is kind of taking a step back, kind of a larger vision. Tiny homes in general have very long ways to go in the sense that there is not very clear or clean zoning built for them. And that's, that's why they haven't taken off as much as they have. It's almost, I mean, you can read a lot of really sad stories on Google. And it can be depressing. But it's almost always the same story where someone builds, they buy a set of footage, or even just one home, and then they're shut down by the local community because they never first approached the community to say, "Is this even something that you want? If so, you know, what are the constraints? What should we be thinking about?" So, that's kind of where Abby has made a real success of it because she spent a number of years approaching the townships, saying, "Is this something you want? Let's talk about it. Do you even like the idea?" Instead of just going ahead.
Is this, is this hooked up to a sewer then?
This is, I believe she has, yeah, sewer system.
Okay.
Possibly two.
And do they have to comply with stormwater? Or because it's on wheels, you don't have to deal with stormwater issues? Stormwater management?
I think she, she had mentioned having to do with some water issues. I don't know the details of it. I know that it's zoned, in her case, as a campground. So, it's not a residency. That's kind of what allows people to...
Who operates the thing? Not the individual house, in a matter of fact. There's some overall operator that provides the services?
Yeah, well, so this one, this one is entirely, well, I shouldn't say entirely. It's almost exclusively Airbnb. So, it's people that are there for short term stays. Abby is creating a main...
So, she's the owner operator of the facility and then rents these spaces and the services to the individual house owners?
Yep. Yeah, on a very short term basis.
Well, she, does she own all the houses?
Yes.
Right, so it's her own kind of, like you say, it's almost, you almost think of it as a campground or an RV park or something. Does she owns all the houses?
I think she sends in a clean crew or something.
Yeah, she does it all.
Yeah, it's all her. And that's, and that's honestly what allowed it to be nice. I mean, about, about two years later, you can see it's still looking very fresh.
She's managing this whole thing. She's in control, right?
Yeah.
Have you had any discussions with Chester County Health Department about how to manage this and water recently?
Not yet. I've kind of, I have, I have approached the I D D and mental health sections of the Chester County Government, just because I have key connections there. They have been fairly positive. Really, the clincher is to find more at the township level a community that, that likes the overview.
Townships don't manage that aspect of housing. The Chester County Health Department, because of all the septic and well permits, we, we essentially manage and make sure that all setbacks required are satisfied. For instance, on a typical lot, you would have a septic system that consists of a primary treatment tank, then a disposal field, and an alternate field, then a well, and the house. And there are setbacks and dimensions that are required between those devices, which tend to make the land required significantly bigger than most people think. So, if you were to apply that model to this, it just wouldn't work. I don't see how this thing works that way at all. So, there's got to be some central waste processing facility that somebody operates. They're fairly complex. We have one that's being, just getting it started in our township. And it's thirty-eight houses, so it's going to be a far bigger system than this would be. It's one in the Jason Township for about sixteen years. But it's a, it's a million, it's a million, one point four million for the system. So, waste disposal is not a minor issue. So, I'm just looking at this and trying to figure out how it might work. Anyway, it's something you need to think about.
Yeah, very much so.
So, Benson, right, we don't have sewers here other than that one unique situation. What, what in Franklin, so what interests you about Franklin Township? Do you think you want to go with the model or it's Airbnb? And what, what particular property, is there a property you're looking at? Or what, what are your goals?
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. That's even, here's a couple of slides away.
Okay.
So, let me jump ahead a little bit. You can see a few different interiors, exteriors. She's given names to each of the units just to kind of make it cute.
This is still Elizabeth Town? And you can see why it works there because it's right by Hershey. You know, we're not by Hershey. You have D, but, yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, and we have, so the, the main attraction here is Longwood Gardens as far as foot traffic. So, that does bring a lot of people. I was looking a year or two ago. It's just like a million and a half or a year. It's like that big. So, people have very good things to say. So, again, these are people making reservations online, on the Airbnb, and then afterwards, they leave a review. And I don't need to read each of these, but you can kind of see the smiles on people's faces. They enjoy their stay. It's, it's a very common theme is, "We were here for the fifteenth wedding anniversary." There are some places, when she got, I think, to twenty homes, she had a couple of people that rented out the whole property for her wedding to be there. So, we'll use all of those. So, this is where it's kind of interesting from a revenue perspective. So, the top line is Elizabeth Town Airbnb revenue overall. The bottom line in orange is the portion that goes to tiny homes, specifically her village. So, you can see since she started, or maybe even jumping back. So, twenty fifteen, down at the bottom, twenty-seven thousand dollars spent in Elizabeth Town on Airbnb stays. That jumped to just under a hundred grand the next year. About doubled the next year. And in twenty eighteen was three hundred and thirteen hundred thousand dollars. So, overall demand is growing. You can see that she's taking a bigger and bigger slice of that pie. And it's really actually driven a lot of demand. There's kind of the same chart over the last few months. You can see she's gone from just a few homes to, this last year, up to three, four, maybe thirty-six.
Oh, Bravo, is that my reading? Sure, Bravo's, they showed the house?
Per month. So, this was January, March, April, June. So, it, it generally updates a little bit in the summer months, but this is a monthly chart. So, it would show here for the last five years, if Airbnb hasn't been around that long. So, this breaks it down just by month. Yep, so she averages just under thirteen hundred per unit per month. Most people stay in there for a day or two days. Shifting gears a little bit. So, when we're thinking about Longwood Gardens, we used as a case study, we wanted to kind of restrict the area to just the area near Longwood Gardens. So, this is zip code one nine three four eight there on the map. You can see a house with a building there in the center. And these are the dollars that have been spent for the last four years. So, twenty fifteen, fifty thousand dollars just in the immediate Kent area on Airbnb. That jumped in twenty sixteen, hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred thousand in twenty seventeen, and last year, half a million dollars in Kent Square spent on people staying in their Airbnb units. That is a few houses. So, Airbnb does have a few full size houses that someone might rent out for a month. But seventy percent of that half a million dollar figure is people renting a house, a room, and pretty much that alone.
Since we have the planning permission here, did you guys decide to ban Airbnb or to allow it in that granny suite? I know you went both ways on it at long term. I think it's banned actually.
You requested that we not include any information, anything about Airbnb.
Oh, great, so it's not banned?
So, no.
Okay. So, I didn't say I want to see a huge Airbnb, but there's a place for Airbnb.
That would normally apply to the granny suite, too. That would normally apply to the girls.
Yeah, so, so what do you, what do you want from Franklin Township? Are you the developer? You want to do this?
I would love to build a tiny house village in a township that's near Longwood Gardens. Franklin is one of the ones that's at the top of the list. I'm also in communications with the township in Borough as well. But Franklin is kind of not so close to Longwood.
We're really far away from there. Longwood Gardens is not, not close here.
Well, for, I mean, from a motel perspective, it seems somewhere to stay the night as kind of a cool place to, to be.
I mean, you're looking for a place, there are plenty of motel sixes and things like that around here. Somebody want to come here for a day or something.
So, is it kind of chicken or egg? You're trying to find a township and then you'll find the land? Or you have some lady in mind and then you want to see the township then?
Typically, the bottleneck is at the township level. And so, it's, it's really a matter of, does the community in general like it? And then, okay, let's look at specific properties, see if this makes sense.
Well, we don't have any trailer parks in the township now. This would be any new addition.
Yeah, it would, and I've talked to, yes, it would definitely be...
I'm not sure how, how well we've received by the residents. I haven't talked, I don't think they've got any indication of the residents in our town, so.
Yeah, and that's why I don't like, I don't like to jump in with, "Hey, guys, here's a, here's a plan. Here's the, we could do this." And I just, I really want to be exploratory and just kind of feel people out and say, "Does this give you disgust? Is this crazy? Is this plausible?" You know, just kind of to gauge people's reaction.
I think John hit on the toughest part, which is the septic. I mean, that's just a, that's a tough one.
The whole, the whole utility support system would have presented to us in some ways and we'd understand what it's about. And of course, the Chester County Health Department would have to sign off on it. We, we wouldn't even be involved in it. We would really essentially be a bystander. When we issue a permit for a house, a person has to get an approval from Chester County Health or a septic system and well and all the way setback, you know. We don't get in the middle of it other than it's a checkoff item for an affirmative. If they agree on configuration, I'd say, you'd need to talk to them. Look at water. Well, that's, that's it. It's beyond just sewer.
So, we do, yeah.
We need, we need a, we need a well. I guess you'd be looking at some kind of a community system here. A single well that distributes water to these things, to the, to the houses, and then something that would collect it and process it. That's, that's a complicated system. The waste treatment for a number of houses like that is not a simple issue. Even if they went to store and pump it.
Right.
We're seeing some of the systems on a larger scale. And they're, they, they would not approve a pump and haul, as a whole township. They, they want some current system. So, I think that's, that's, that's your major, major verdict for something like Franklin because there isn't a sewer system. You were up in London Grove Township, which is a couple of townships up from us. They have a municipal sewer system and they got, water distributed throughout the whole township. So, that would be a far more welcoming, let's say. At least you'd have those facilities immediately available. Whether they approve you or not, that's up to the board up there. There's just nothing like that down here. So, you, you'd be climbing a huge mountain down here at Franklin trying to accommodate this, this thing with those facilities, so.
Yeah, well, I'm curious.
Here's why you said that Franklin would be at near the top of the list unless it's just being friendly. Oh, you guys are number one.
Always have a set that just before.
Because if, if I was in your shoes, I would think, aside from land cost, I would think somewhere like Pennsbury Township or something. Actually, closer, Kent would be more appealing. Here, it's a good twenty minutes away to, to Longwood Gardens. And so, why would I want to go on vacation here? So, maybe the vineyards or what else?
U of D, that might be fun. You know, it's, it's kind of a good location. We have tons of parks. Tons of biking and biking. But to Stefan's point, you wouldn't think Longwood Gardens would be the first thought.
Right, so I was kind of curious why, I mean, unless you're just, you know, was it fine for you or to be nice?
Yeah, and it's funny, it's funny you mention that. So, originally, this is probably two years ago, I was looking at kind of the, you know, some of the district accounting or the Delaware areas, thinking, "All right, what attractions are here? Is there a business case for people to be coming?" And then through a friend, I found out about this website that has this data. And then through a friend I found out about this website that has this data about people spending money on Airbnb in the local area. And I kind of put to rest the concerns around, well, what is the attraction? It's almost like the numbers, like the demand is there. And it almost, I think I attributed most of it to Longwood. There are festivals and games and events in the area. I think most of it is people.
We really don't have any significant commercial business in this township or the next township down London, Britain. Primarily due to our proximity to Delaware and the differences in tax structure between Delaware and Pennsylvania. So there's no advantage for any retail business to build anything in Franklin here. We don't have, we aren't far from anything. London, Britain has just a little bit more than we have. So, you know, something further north from here, up toward Kent, would certainly be a better deal for you. You'd be closer to attractions and then there are shopping opportunities. There's really nothing here. You have to go down to New York if you want to go in shopping. There are no shops, there are no coffee shops. Well, there's a couple of little restaurants here, but they're not, not the things that I would think attract tourists. The residents like them, they're decent places to go and I'm not sure they have the attractions to tourists to come down. I'm not sure we have a good fit for you. That's just my overall view of just what I heard.
Well, Stephen's thinking for you is maybe some homework, which is go to the county, you know, and see if you can solve some of those problems because, I mean, we can't solve that. We don't have sewer, we don't want sewer particularly, we like the way it is. But so, you know, if the county has thought that through, then come back with how, you know, that's approachable. And then I don't, in, in concept, I don't have a problem with it, but it's just, that's a big, big hurdle to, to pass. That would change the way everything's done. And to John's point, we can't do it differently than the county tells us. So you have to start there.
It would also be a big expense for you on top of having to buy the houses. You'd have to have this infrastructure set up, so I think it is real thinking about that.
Do you have the financing in place? How many, are you thinking about how many you want to do at the beginning and all? How much you're dedicating towards land? Have you thought about all that?
Yeah, we put some preliminary conditions together. The initial investment from a business lending standpoint would be roughly half a million dollars for all the reasons that we're talking about. That would give you somewhere between five and fifteen homes, so that would be kind of to prove it out. And in all honesty, probably would pretty much cap there. I'm not talking about, let's go thirty, forty homes. This is, this is a relatively small vision in that sense. But either way, regardless, there's definitely some, I mean, there's obviously the cost of the land, cost of the houses. A large percentage of the, of that, of those funds go to site prep and putting all of the, because really, no matter what company you're looking at, because the homes are so spread out, it's, it's just a given that whether it's sewer or something, whatever it is, there's going to be pretty much all around, it's just that.
Five acre parcel around here might run at four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, yeah.
And five acres is pushing the limits on your model. I mean, you need ten or more really to include the infrastructure, if there was also a septic and well to.
Is the southern one, is that what Lancaster Town?
The, so there is, there are a couple of builders in Lancaster. One is, I don't have nice things to say about, they don't have very nice things to say about.
Well, you have much, much lower, much lower land cost if you go west from here. You're in a fairly high land cost around here. Yeah, and probably maybe a little easier situation with the waste disposal in a less populated area than we are right here. I'm not seeing a real good fit for us here, I'm being straightforward with you.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, that's, that's why I would say we would, that's why I'm here, to do that. We're trying to keep it near Longwood, just because of, just because of the dollar amounts that are spent. I mean, if you look at other zip codes in the area, there's some Airbnb traffic, but you're not having hundreds of thousands of dollars, half a million dollars in one year.
I think the plus side is that with your model, when I'm adding, there's certain costs that are added to the township, which is nice. It certainly adds a lot of traffic, but I, but I think, I think there's a place for that. I just think that it's just going to take a little more work on your part. And this may or may not be the perfect place. I think it's too early for us to say it's just impossible, but there are just significant challenges you have to overcome.
Yeah, I would agree. Just do a little more work on the infrastructure with John's suggestion on the county. I mean, you think about different things like it's a body of land outright, you know, talking to a farmer near Longwood Gardens, seeing if they do a lease with the land, so you don't have to offer a cost of.
Of owning the land.
If Longwood doesn't work, think about other things. There's places where boy scouts go, like Horseshoe in the Maryland Pennsylvania line or, it's, something like that would be kind of cool if I was a boy scout or something like that. Yeah, it's just, it's like I'm on a chart.
That's story.
Pretty much the last of it. You can see throughout the year, like I'm looking closer to Longwood Gardens, for the first three months of the year, not a lot of traffic, for the other three months, relatively solid. So you're trying to spring some a palm. In general, very good gradients of the Airbnb community in Southern Chester County, I mean, four point nine five, so it's a good crowd.
Put a lot of work into it, very passionate. It's great to learn about it because I do pay.
It was an interesting presentation. I'd seen a good bit of this stuff on the improvement report, so a lot of unique kind of houses. But what I would wonder is that if somebody actually, and these were couples who were actually living in them, they were out, most of them were out west, so. Just couldn't imagine somebody living in there for six months and not just totally getting in their business.
Well, you're.
Because they, because they had to use the place, they had to keep flipping this over, flipping that over. Every time they went to do something, they were considering the furniture in there to get around, so.
Did you ever watch the episode on they're like looking at, once three hundred square feet and the person's like, oh, this is too big.
It was too small, right?
Didn't see that.
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
Very good. I appreciate you bringing it down. I'm just looking at it, I think you've got a whole lot of work to do with health department and how you'd actually manage the waste wherever you go here. If you go to, if you go to somebody that's got a sewer system and a water system already in place, I think you've got a huge step up there, so. And that's where I'd, I'd say you want to start working on. Starting from scratch down here with your own system would just be an enormous genetic hurdle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, thank you very much.
Good to be here.
Thank you.
How far do you have to go?
How do you mean?
Where do you live?
Oh, I live in Kent.
Okay, Seaton, Florida.
So you do Kent really well.
I live by the victory.
Nice.
We're going to townhouse with the new ones.
I wish.
Okay, let's see, what's our next slide?
Server discussion.
Server discussion.
All right.
Pegasus again.
Well, we're back at this, we avoided this mess about how many years ago? Four years ago, we had the Sherpa guy in there and he wanted a whole lot of money to upgrade our system and we were able to buy a piece of server software and get it installed and avoided some major costs, but I guess the question is, what's grabbing us now? What's wrong with what we have now?
The Microsoft is discontinuing the, the server software that we have.
On January one or end of January, January one?
Well.
You say January.
Two thousand twenty, they said, I believe it is. David, I don't know exactly.
Okay, okay, so I'm just starting, I think it's important to understand what the, what the deadline is and when we have to make this decision, but it looks like you've got a, somewhere between seventeen thousand to twenty thousand dollar cost to do this.
Well.
I guess the part, the fundamental question before we get involved in the nuts and bolts of it, what do we get? We're working now, everything we have now is working.
Well, it's going to stop in January though.
But, but.
The continues to make stops for this?
So we're going to have to pay twenty thousand dollars for no fundamental benefit. Nothing's going to change, it's going to work just the way it does right now.
Well, depends on, depends on, no, it depends on which, which package you choose.
Yeah, but I mean functionality of what we do here, it's not going to improve that in any way.
Yeah, life isn't going to be more exciting.
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's your point, yeah, this is.
I was just going to make the point that we're not getting any.
If you need this to do business, if you need this to do your business, it's like, it's like we have a computer, we are lost. So it's, it's to keep things going.
I mean, we've spent a lot of time digitizing all of our information and, you know, it's on the server and we have access to it. If you do something, if something happens that we don't.
We have to do it.
We can't do that, we've wasted a lot of time and money.
So we're really getting spirited by some planned obsolescence by the IT industry.
So, so your question, your current system is hardware-based, correct? With a backup somewhere.
We own a server and Microsoft.
And what you're looking at is hardware-based?
Well, there's three different options.
John, we'll get into that. I was going to make sure we understand that we're going to spend a whole lot of money and get nothing for it.
Well, unfortunately.
No, proven.
Unfortunately, the systems age out. You know, whether it's a home system, and when I worked at the bank, you know, constantly updating IT systems because of servers.
They do, but you know, I will go back and look at the way I operated ten or fifteen years ago as an engineer in the field, sometimes in foreign countries and functions that I need then, needed then are the same as I need now. I don't need anything more than I had then, but I've got a whole lot, I've had to buy a whole lot of the software and hardware over the years to just the function, and that's where we are right here.
So you have to buy a phone.
We can change that, so.
The IT industry has carved a big hunk of the economy out for themselves and they've successfully got everybody on this merry-go-round.
So we, we have prices between ten thousand, sixteen thousand and nineteen thousand, there are three options, John, I just wanted to briefly tell us.
You've got a whole lot of experience, so.
But I just want to be clear, it's bigger than just, and I, I answered his question there, it's bigger than just a one-time fee, there's two, there's two sets of fees that we need to talk about, Jennifer, you want to take us through that? I just don't, it's not just, I just want people to know, it's not as simple as comparing nineteen thousand to sixteen thousand to nine thousand.
So what's, so what's the lifecycle cost? How do you?
Well, if you go, if you go like fully onsite, you're going to be buying a server and, and the new software and a big expense is going to be migrating all our emails to the new server.
Right.
That's all included in the twenty thousand.
That's included in the twenty thousand, there is a life to that, okay? At some point, that's going to be obsolete, all right? So if you go.
Wait, what's the monthly fee?
It's from one thousand to thirteen hundred. Each one is a monthly fee.
The monthly, they have that monthly item, it's that flat rate service, that's what we pay for and it's not, it's not a thousand sixty-three. I talked to him today, it's actually eight thirty-five. That's the monthly fee we pay and they take care of all our computers, any problems, you can call ten times a day. You know, they can be here for a week solid, they don't pay any more than that monthly fee.
And we all pay that amount whether it's onsite hybrid or fully hosted?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what was important to me.
Well, so let me just say, Donna, or let me just check, John, so we paid at eight thirty-five, but then you have on the other two options that are in the cloud, it's higher. It's monthly is thirteen ninety-one.
Well, I said, he introduced that.
To eight thirty-five?
For the flat rate service.
There's two things, the ones, licenses and ones of flowers.
The hybrid.
Gotcha.
Can you figure out what this is on a five-year course? So we can compare, I mean, I don't know if we can do that tonight, but that's basically what the question we're asking, right, is.
The lifespan of five years, you want to do.
What, what, what did you say recently?
About the eight.
I, I.
You get away with it sometimes.
How long has it been since our last one, last server purchase?
I believe five years.
Well, we dodged our bullet there because we found a way to eliminate.
Okay, so John, I'll take that.
Four years ago, but.
To a five-year cost.
So that would be what you want to see, is.
Well, the cheapest way to do this is the, is the fee in the cloud, yeah.
Fully hosted, that's probably.
Yes, and, and I've got new, I've got new figures on that if you want to.
Sure. But it isn't the cheapest because, and that's because if you're going to spend four thousand dollars a year for licenses.
This has changed, just.
Okay, so that's mine, I don't know, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Chase you better?
Thanks, yes.
Oh, good. This four thousand dollars a year, this is a lot of money.
Technology isn't always a blessing, but just think of, I mean, you just have to.
Yes. This is for the cloud.
Okay, so these are the latest numbers.
This is the one I talked to him about the day, because I, I thought this was the only one.
That's right.
Anybody can check my. You see the download table?
There's more, do you need more?
Okay, so this is the cloud.
There's month, the, that monthly items on that, they, they are correct, that's what it would cost. Now, the, the thing with, yes, you're paying this every month, but you're old, you always have the latest greatest software, you're not.
Exactly.
But it's never obsolete.
But so it's going to cost you twelve K plus a year. Plus, plus your nine, plus your nine thousand.
But remember, we're paying eight thirty-five a year now, plus we're paying three hundred and some dollars a month for the backup.
You said twelve K or twelve hundred?
Well, it's per month, right, so it's one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars per month times twelve. But, Don, that's not anything new, we're only, then what we're, what we're, we're paying the eight thirty-five now, okay? So yes, the licensing will be new, but further on down the line, you're going to be able to do away with the, the backup that we're paying.
So then, so John, maybe I, I need, what I want is a, is a table that tells me what the, what the cost is, and I, I think you've given me this already, what the one-time cost is, I want that in a box. And then for each option, I want to know what the monthly cost is and make that, make that a yearly cost. And because then I want to, it's probably going to be the fully hosted, but I just don't know what these other monthly costs are and how different they are between the fully hosted, the hybrid and I think the onsite is nothing. And, and trying to figure that out.
Table showed what it was, one year, two year, three year, five year, as far out as you want. So once, you'll see what the, you'll go, you'll see what the lifecycle, you'll see the lifecycle cost of it, so. You need a tab sheet that shows.
It's a great value actually.
Do you see where I'm going? I just, it's a monthly, I hate monthly costs, they drive me crazy. So I just want to, but sometimes that's the best way to go. I just need to see what that, that looks like. And, and I, and I, it's not so much what we're doing now, because we're doing now what we're doing now, it's more about the three options, always a hybrid.
Okay, I, I will do that for you, just let me explain a couple of things. One, one of our biggest expenses is migrating our emails. And, you know, whether we, if we went with a hybrid and, and, or onsite and we, with a server and we migrate them to the server, that's, that's a big chunk out of the seven thousand dollars to set everything up, okay? And you're going to do that again when that software and server becomes obsolete. Where if it's on the cloud, once we migrate the emails to the cloud, that's it, they're done. We won't have to do that again. Okay, so that, that's a savings there to get those into the cloud. The backup, we have a backup server here and again, we pay three hundred and some dollars.
A month.
Yeah, because it depends on how much information's on it.
No, no, I just, that's all part of the cost.
Yes, yes, it's a part of the cost. And when it's in the cloud, we have a, a one-time fee and actually they're, they're giving us the backup. And then it's, it's, it's done.
So, so you're giving like the best.
Because it's in the cloud.
It's in the cloud, yeah.
Okay, so that, that is again.
So that's the other, that's the other component, that's the other component. Is, we have a certain set of hardware here right now, so what goes away?
This, the server, we won't need the server, we obviously won't need all of our computers.
Okay, so all of our equipment, computers, the workstations, do they still work?
Yes.
So we only replace hardware, software on that stuff?
No, I mean, now as.
What about all these notebooks and the laptops?
They'll, they'll work, yes, I mean, you have to update them as you would any other time, I mean.
The laptops, the laptops are still going to wear out, just like in normal, the, the cloud, your Microsoft, you'll connect through them wireless, you wire here or through the internet. wirelessly, wire here, or through the internet, to that software, the software, overall software will remain the same, it's how smart is your computer the basic operating system?
No, I got a laptop that works.
It will still work. It will continue to work.
Okay, but I'm not buying a thousand dollar laptop, it's just worth this for thirty bucks and it works.
Technically.
I'm not going to buy another.
Technically, you could buy a laptop that just has the basic operating system on it, you wouldn't need Microsoft where on your computer because it'd be up here in the cloud, so you'd connect and have access to it.
So when you, when you buy new stuff.
Right.
Just want to make sure we understand the impact on our hardware.
Okay, I will, I will.
Okay.
So I can see the numbers, so it's going to cost a little more over five years to go with the cloud, but you're never going to have to transfer every time you replace your server, you're never going to go back through and move all those files, which is about seven thousand dollars each time.
Yes, we won't have that cost anymore, and, and we're not going to have to buy a server anymore.
Exactly, but brace yourself, because over five years, it's going to cost, you know, probably about ten K more, maybe eighteen K.
Because you've got those monthly fees.
Because your monthly fees are four hundred dollars per month, so I just did the math, I said four hundred.
And they come up.
It's forty-eight hundred per year, and that times five years is twenty-four thousand. So just warning everybody, I personally think the cloud's the way to go. I don't think you want to be in the business of maintaining servers here.
I agree with you, because that's, that's the way the business model's going, they're going to drive you that way, they're going to continually obsolete your equipment.
Yes, we will get nickel and dime, tell me to.
That's a good way to put it.
And I do too, I just want to see the numbers on this table.
But just be prepared, because that's what I, that's what I feel, it's going to, it's going to cost a little bit more.
You're going to need to know it.
As a government entity, I mean, if, we're not going to be, um, if, if our current systems aren't being serviced by Microsoft or whoever, I would think we almost are obligated to, to make sure that.
Well, we are going to change something, we're not going to, we have to, we have to do one of these things. Yeah, we're not, no one says.
They're going to avoid hardware and software, so.
Yeah, we have one more race, I say.
Yeah, we have to do something.
Your problem, not mine.
That's another problem, Jim, is, you know, things, you have problems with service.
It goes and then they're like, you're screwed.
Yeah, right, so.
So this is a constant evolution.
Yeah.
We can't go back to like a seventy-five.
Now, we'll have to budget for it.
All of your extrasanica. It's always on the oldest version for that one thing.
The only item that I would take off of, of this quote.
Which one did you just give us?
Yes, is, is the QuickBooks, and I, I talked to Nate about this.
You don't need it?
Well, yeah, I need it, that's what I do on the accounting one. Again, the one, no, like, this is quoted as online, and, and he quoted it as sixty dollars a month because that's what the online version of QuickBooks is, okay? But the way I keep our books, I have an account for every fund, which is a set of books for every fund, and QuickBooks considers that a separate company. Okay, this is for one company.
So is it cost even more?
Wait a minute. So, so they, I hate fees, they, they give you, they say, if you wanted, you can, you pay for one company to go online, and then it's five dollars for a additional company. Okay, well, I have fifteen companies, all right, that, you know, General Fund is a company, Park and Records is a company, O'Space is a company, all of those are companies, the Developers Account, where I keep track of that, the Storewater Account, the, you know, all, all my books, everything is a separate company. So it would be sixty dollars plus five dollars for each one of those, so you're talking over a hundred dollars a month for that, where if we bought the software that I use now, which I update every two to three years.
Right.
And the only, the only thing I'd have to do, it would be on my computer where it is now.
Right.
And, but we have to make sure it's backed up, and that would get backed up, you know, to the cloud.
So how much does that cost?
That's, he said, that's, that's all that.
Cost, so it costs nothing additional?
No, and like I said, the software, like I'm running QuickBooks seventeen now, and twenty is out, so I'm not going to buy it now, but maybe when this is all, we get everything moved next year, so I can update my software.
Well, when you buy it, we have to pay for that.
If I, if we buy the physical software and put it on my computer, we buy that and it's done.
How much is that?
Or you could get a cloud version.
Pardon me?
You should be able to get a cloud version of it.
No, see.
She doesn't want the cloud.
No, it's not that I don't want the cloud, it's going to cost us more money when the, the, the hard copy on my computer actually would be better for me in most cases, I mean, working, having the cloud would be nice, I could hit it no matter where I was, if you had a question, I could, you know?
Right.
But it's going to cost us, it's, it's, it's going to cost us.
Yeah, a lot of money.
Yeah.
All right, so if, I, I think that the cloud is about a thousand more per year, if these numbers are all about right.
Well, I still want to see the table.
We'll do the table, and then we can come back and talk about it, but that's pretty.
We have time on this decision, right?
We have until January.
We'll always say.
I talked to Nate, and I told him we were going to discuss it tonight, and he's more than happy to come to a meeting.
I don't think he really needs to do that.
Well, I was just saying, if he wanted to, we offer, you know, we can answer questions.
And you can send us an email with the numbers, so it can wait till November to decide?
Sure.
Because when you, when IT is just, they flip a switch and turn you over and then collect the money, right?
Yeah.
It's going to take a long time, right?
Yeah, a long process.
Push a couple buttons and collect the money, right?
The, the longest need with this is going to be converting what data needs to go from your current system to order, and then, and that's where you could run into some headaches.
And, and like I said, the emails are, they have a lot of emails, that's the biggest.
And if it goes to the cloud, they just all do it?
No, they will do it, and see, once we do this, then again, all that expense is done, you have it now, the expense now, but once it's out there, it will be done.
Well, that's true, that's true for the hybrid or the fully hosted.
The hybrid, they're just going to put the emails in cloud.
Right, so that's what you said, that's the cost, you still have to change. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm with, I'm like ninety percent there, I just need to see the numbers.
Okay.
Joe, is there any other way, and I know that you won't want to do this, to reconfigure the way you use QuickBooks rather than in fifteen separate companies? You can't do it within one?
No.
Okay.
I don't know, it's just, I just, keeps it clean from an accounting standpoint.
It's worked for you for all these years.
That's what they call it, that's what they call it, fifteen companies.
I went to, I went to a copse and they helped them one time with their, have their treasurer, and she had everything running through one account in QuickBooks, okay? So she wanted to do her budget, and she had no idea what, you know, how much was spent for Park, I mean, she did, she had numbers, but she couldn't separate it out easily to say, this is my budget for Park, this is my budget for.
It was all pushed together.
It's like a good system, right?
It's a database, you should be able to pull reports and.
Trust me, they called me to see how I do it, I mean, I've showed other people how to do it, so I'm not, you know, but I mean, I've got a good system, I'm not changing it.
All right, okay, I got the message right. All right.
Just testing it.
The software package, or the different ones, it's not a bad collection there, gives you a lot of options to store your files.
It just costs so much, it costs so much.
So that's why I would look at this, figure out, and then get a couple more quotes from other suppliers, see what they would offer. With the Teams, you got Conference Teams.
This is our guy, though.
Your SharePoint, you can share files, Microsoft Teams, you can share files on that, you can do conference calls on that, you know, it's like a Skype.
No, I think it's all the right stuff, and, and I think it's just like, they can charge you whatever they want, we're going to do that.
We're not, we, we dodged this bullet once before, and I knew when we did, we'd never do it again, so I think we're, the general discussion is the cloud, everybody on board with the cloud?
Well, I'm not there, you go, I'll go see them.
No, but the numbers can add okay.
Well, I'll, I'll play, I'll see the numbers.
I think we're done with hardware, for sure.
I would say that's quite a good idea, but, okay, so let's keep going.
All right.
Okay, so we're just going to get some numbers the next time, and I think that's going to.
Well, as soon as I get it together, I will give them to you, maybe that's why we should get them.
Okay, let's see, um, you want to do the next item here?
This is the big one, I thought we were going to make a whole lot of numbers.
Go ahead.
Can I do this?
Sure, all right.
Sale of property?
Yeah, so.
I made the motion, and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution twenty nineteen seventeen, authorizing sale of zero point zero two acres of township property, a lot of money here, designated as a hardaway way in Wiganmere subdivision to Pendott to allow Pendott to install a pulp, a pulp road pipe on North Pine Creek Road.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thanks, David. So the work has, has to get done, right?
It's five hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, it's always going to be five hundred dollars, that was for a big windfall, that's a big old few years.
Here's a, here's a proposal, not going to use anything else. How about you charge us fifty thousand dollars and roll it in S Street, which Chesterville Road.
That's our discussion.
It'd be subtle advantage for a tiny village.
Because if you were to do that, it comes out to seventeen thousand four hundred dollars a year.
I get the same thing you do.
Right?
Absolutely.
How much do you think, do you know that, now? No, that's not, that's like, that's like Robin, I mean, plus it's prime real estate land, you could put like, a lot of tiny homes right there.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's got a drainpipe.
As you said, Joe, all they have to do is condemn it, we're screwed, right, so they can do whatever they want.
So you want to pull the check out right there?
So at least they give us five hundred dollars, it's. I mean, can you push back and say we want more, or is this kind of like, you've got to do what they tell you to do?
I, I don't care about the money, I'm just trying to leave Richard and fix that road first.
Well, it's not the same people, okay, I mean, I know it's Pendott, it's Pendott, but it's not the same, it's not the maintenance.
Yeah, we need, we need to talk, we need to talk to each other. No, they're doing some favor on that one area, so.
Yeah.
Quick pro quo.
You don't really have a whole lot of.
I saw, today Jeff, Jeff put out a whole bunch of pictures of Chesterville Road, that thing is so foul, I can't believe it, did you see those pictures?
You can see, I drive it every day.
I wonder if people are complaining.
Well, we could, is there anything we can do officially, like send over a letter from the board, or does that make?
You know how many times we have called, reported, I've written to John Lawrence, Jeff has written to John Lawrence, um, Jeff calls everybody he knows, we send pictures, resident, we give number to residents to send to call and complain.
I mean, that's an embarrassment to us for.
It's dangerous, let's see.
To have that. You sore, I throw it down.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
It's been seconded.
Can we just vote?
We need more discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, fine, we're all fans, say aye.
All right.
Any opposed, nay? The motion carries five zero.
Still like the fifty thousand. All right.
I think Nancy gets one, I guess, higher.
I'm busy doing the chart.
Oh, you do the chart, you want to just?
I haven't, I haven't gotten one yet.
I'm still finding it.
You guys make a motion.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of rude, guys. Um, all right, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors authorize a solicitor to advertise ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh two regarding the installation of two no-breaker tarers signs on Appleton Road for enactment after the next level being a Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded by David, discussion?
Yeah, uh, what was the complaint, do we complain about these?
They're, well, you know, break tarers are right, they, they want to put them on Appleton so that they don't use them, uh, it's too much noise coming into the village.
Was there a complaint against putting the signs up?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm a son of a gun, I thought there was a complaint.
No, no, no.
In reality, the drivers don't.
The way it was written.
The drivers don't comply anyway, but.
So people who will be benefiting from those break tarers, because they won't hear the noise, uh, will be.
Residents in the law now.
Maybe five thousand dollars, and it also tells us where we can put these signs and all that.
Right, no complaints from the neighbors.
And also the state policeman in here, and we asked him if he enforces it, he said no, basically said no.
Yeah, I, I've heard that, but.
All right, but we'll still do it.
If signs have, if it convinces seventy or eighty percent of them, we're better off, right?
It makes a lot, it makes a lot of noise, you pointed out.
Okay.
Okay, so any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Excellent.
All right, let's see.
Next is the Abell subdivision, is that for you, Nate?
I'm going to take this one, yeah. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors accept the extension of time to the review clock for the Abell subdivision through April sixteenth, two thousand and ten.
Okay, twenty ten?
Oops. Probably have to fix it first, so I'll be starting on that.
Twenty twenty.
I make a motion, blah blah, that they, um, the extension of the review clock for the Abell subdivision through April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, and I'll second that. Thank you, Donna, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five two zero.
All right, Tony will be happy, we will do it again, how many times have we done that? Every six months?
Six months. Since two thousand and ten, now it's a year.
Any sign, any signs of any?
No, and, and.
The guy loses a lot of money if you don't do it.
He has, he has a lot of money invested in it so far, and he would lose it all if he, if he stopped doing this.
Yeah, but he's. Not gaining.
Over five years.
So it took ten minutes of our time here.
Less than a thousand.
Okay, so, now the public comment.
Public comment. Oh, we were at the public comment section of meeting, any public comment?
The, the speed of the signs here on Appleton, they had the orange flags added to them, is that, that's something that's new, isn't it? I don't recall.